Now go up to and just.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. We are in a workshop session this evening, March 4th, 2024. I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and employment history of individuals. May I have a second? All in favor? We'll be back when we're finished sometime around seven. Hi, everyone. Welcome to our March 6 workshop. Thank you for being patient. We did have an executive session prior to the public portion of our meeting in which we discussed collective bargaining negotiations and employment history of individuals. No decisions were taken during that executive session, no votes, and so now we'll continue on into our regular agenda. We have the majority of our meeting tonight is is budget. That's where we're going to to spend most of our time. A couple of quick announcements on storm preparedness. The rain is stripping down through the roof as we speak. The the rate, the forecast range from one to five inches, so we don't really know what's coming definitively. We do have a concern that the ground is already saturated. High tide at tonight is at eight oh seven and tomorrow morning at eight thirty four. The police department will keep watch on the streets west of Long Terrace in case of needed closures of the waterfront. The pumps are in place at Cedar Street, but in a new configuration. And we believe that we'll be able to keep Cedar Street open for school in the morning, but do please drive slowly, even if the road is open for the safety of our crews, but also to try to reduce wakes for any water that might accumulate on Cedar Street. Resident parking program we have today sold one hundred and ninety nine. I'm going to be the two hundredth person. It'll feel amazing.
Number's on the permit, right?
That's right. If you're a resident of ineligible streets, you can get them anytime here at Village Hall. We're able to take cash or check. And the cost is going to be prorated over a period of months as you know, as the longer we go out from the from the year, the closer to the end of the year, the cost shifts. As we announced during our public discussion of the program's launch until the end of March, Cold Spring Police Department will be giving warnings. You're going to start seeing bright orange sheets being placed on vehicles by the officers beginning of the weekend. The meters are installed. You'll see that they're bagged. They'll go into effect April 1st. Or potentially, potentially Easter weekend. We'll have a longer conversation about that. The ruler on the knuckles can become for you. Yeah. Okay. So tonight's our first budget season workshop and board discussion. We have to follow a strict schedule for reviewing, taking comment on and passing the budget in order to meet the deadline set by New York State. As such, tonight is a working session with a number of business items at the end. To enable us to get through the agenda as efficiently as possible, we will only be taking public comment on topics related to the budget discussion. If you have concerns or you want to provide comment on any other topic on the agenda, you can send an email to the clerk@BCSclerk@coldspringny.gov or send us written comments at eighty five Main Street. So with that, I'm going to take a couple of items. At the beginning, the first our representative of our auditor is joining us online. Normally, we have our audit review earlier in the year. But for a number of reasons, it is delayed, was delayed this year, and we're having it now. So we'll discuss that quickly before we move into the next topic. Hello, this is John.
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
Do you want me to share the presentation? You have it loaded up also.
I have it loaded up as well.
I paid you co-host, so you can share it.
Okay. Okay, can you see it? Oh, sorry, I gotta gotta press the share button.
There we go.
Okay, this is the audit presentation for the year ended May 31st, 2023.
The last year's cycle.
Yes. That's me. I was the engagement partner, Douglas Zimmerman. He's our managing director for the Buffalo Office. He was the technical review partner. And Justin Abbott was the engagement staff. Excuse me. Audit test work took place the week of October 2nd, 2023. Draft financials were issued February 12th of 2024, and we're currently reviewing with the board. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on the following report. That's the basic financial statements. An unmodified is what you want. It's a clean opinion. All records and information requested by EFPR Group were freely available for our inspection. The results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. These, this is the financial results of the village wide. This is full accrual. We bring in your long term assets and long term liabilities. Total assets decreased one hundred and fifty two thousand or about point eight percent to a balance of roughly nine million dollars. This was mainly as a result of the village's New York State ERS pension asset becoming a liability due to changes in actuarial assumptions and a decrease in the value of the length of service award program, otherwise known as LoSAP investments. These decreases were offset by increases in cash and receivables. Deferred outflows of resources decreased one hundred and fifty two thousand or about nineteen percent to a balance of six hundred and fifteen thousand as a result of changes in actuarial actuarial assumptions related to the New York State pensions and LoSAP. Total liabilities increased forty one thousand or about half a percent to a balance of seven point eight million. This is mainly as a result of increases in accounts payable bands and New York State pension liabilities, which were offset by a decrease in compensated absences of the total OPEB liability and the net pension liability for LoSAP. Deferred inflows of resources decreased two hundred and forty thousand or about twenty eight percent to a balance of six hundred and seventeen thousand. This was a result of changes in the actuarial assumptions related to New York State pensions and LoSAP, which were offset by an increase in grant advances. Total net position decreased roughly twenty five thousand dollars or two point one percent to a balance of one point two million. Changes are as follows. Net investment in capital assets increased under ninety six thousand or ten percent to a balance of two point one million as a result of an increase in net capital assets and by principal payments on related debt. Restricted net position increased under eight eighty five thousand. This was a roughly a one thousand, two hundred percent increase to a balance of two hundred thousand two hundred thousand dollars as a result of changes in capital projects. Unrestricted net position decreased four hundred and seven thousand or about fifty nine percent to a deficit of balance of one one million dollars. Now, this deficit is direct result of reporting OPEB is required by government accounting standards board, state number seventy five, in accordance with state state guidelines. The village is only permitted to fund OPEB on a pay-as-you-go basis and is not permitted to accumulate funds for this liability. It's a noncash liability. You pay your health insurance bill every month. It's they just required this to be put on the books. The village's revenue decreased by one hundred and ninety seven thousand or five point five percent. Major factors contributing to this where our program revenue was one point five million, a decrease of twenty five thousand from the prior year as a re- as an increase in charges for services was was offset by decreases in operating grants and capital grants. General revenue was one point nine million, a decrease of one hundred and seventy one thousand or eight point three percent as increases in real property taxes and use of money and property was offset by a loss on LoSAP investments. Expenses were three point four million, an increase of eight hundred and forty six thousand or about thirty three percent over the prior year. This was mainly as a result of an increase in home and community services expenses related to water services and changes in the actuarial assumptions related to the village's pension plans and OPEB. Changes in pension plans and OPEB are discussed in more detail in notes four and six to the financial statements. These are the financial results of just the general fund. This is the modified accrual. These are the numbers you would normally see. Total assets increased one hundred and fifty eight thousand or seven point one percent to a balance of two point four million dollars. This was mainly a result of an increase of cash and equivalents and interfund balances. Total liabilities increased ninety eight thousand or twenty three percent to a balance of five hundred and sixteen thousand. There were increases across all line items, so it wasn't necessarily related to one item. Deferred inflows of resources increased hundred and three percent, or sorry, hundred and three thousand or nine hundred and twelve percent to a balance of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars due to timing of funds received in advance of recognition criteria. Total fund balance of the general fund decreased forty two thousand dollars or two point three percent to a balance of one point eight million dollars. Changes in each fund balance classification were was as follows. Your non-spendable increased three hundred and fifteen dollars or five percent to a balance of six point six, there's just under seven thousand as a result of an increase in prepaid insurance. Assigned decreased twenty seven thousand or eight point three percent to a balance of three hundred thousand dollars as a result of the village decreasing the amount appropriated for the subsequent year's budget. Unassigned increased twenty thousand or one point four percent to a balance of one point five million dollars. Revenue was two point three million, which is a decrease of fifty seven thousand or two point four percent from the prior year. This was primarily from increases in real property taxes and departmental income being offset by decreases in state and federal aid. Expenditures were roughly two point four million dollars, which was an increase of one hundred and ninety four thousand or eight point eight percent over the prior year. This was primarily a result of increased expenditures related to garbage contracts and personnel costs. Upcoming pronouncements. These are just upcoming pronouncements that Gatsby has issued. None of them will have any major effect on the village, but we figured we'd let you know that they're coming. Significant accounting policies are described in note one to the financial statements. Accounting estimates were reasonable and supported. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We had no difficulties in performing our audit or disagreements with management over any accounting, reporting, or auditing matters. We we will obtain a management representation letter. There were no significant changes to the planned audit strategy or significant risks initially identified and previously communicated to those charged with governance as part of our audit planning communications. There were no matters noted relevant to the audit, including but not limited to violations or possible violations of laws or regulations, risk of material misstatements, including fraud risks, or tips or complaints regarding the village's financial reporting that were that we were made aware of as a result of our inquiry of those charged with governance. We are not aware of any consultations with accounting or auditing about accounting or auditing matters between management and other independent public accountants, nor are we aware of opinions obtained by management from other independent public accountants on the application of generally accepted accounting principles. There were no disagreements with management about matters, whether or not satisfactorily resolved that individually or in the aggregate could be significant to the village's financial statements or to our auditor's report. There are no other matters that we consider significant to the oversight of the village's financial reporting process that have not been previously communicated. We did issue a management letter. The dormant capital projects, this has been a comment that we have repeated over the years. There's approximately just about eighty three hundred dollars in cash and dormant projects. We recommended that they be the projects be closed down and the cash transferred back to where it should be. And the next one is just, we're letting all our clients know that unobligated American Rescue Plan Act funds, you have to have those obligated by the end of, by December 31st, 2024, or you would lose any unobligated funds. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to make sure for the public that our ARCA award So we are, we are not obligated if not, not to be clear, we have committed to a project in terms of obligation for ARCA and federal powers that were not registered. But we are in the process of working towards obligations that I just wanted, wanted folks to know that we were not letting that money sit, go, going on. Any other questions for John?
Questions. Thank you, and thanks to our accountant for making your job easy. Straight forward.
No, she does, she does a good job.
That's the takeaway from the audit every year is Michelle does fantastic work. So.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll let you get on with your meeting then. Have a nice evening.
Next is update from village representatives to the Hudson Highlands Fear Trail Data Committee. So we have with us tonight Henry Feldman and James Labate, and maybe, so you want to still in the corner so we can they don't see your back, Jeff in the hall seat. If we can adjust the camera.
You, I mean, you, okay. Yeah. You're very.
I think he's gonna find small document that I put together and would be great. I don't want to spring this on you, but if you have a report, the alternatives analysis report. If not, don't worry about it. It just, it just has the alignments.
And we have it, we have copies of it here, and it is on, it will be on the village website, and Jeff is gonna pulling it up to share it as you speak.
Anyway. While he's pulling that up, I'll preface it my comments by just running through. Oh, there it is.
Thank you, Kelly.
Before I get to that document, just run through what leads up to it, which is review of a meeting that took place on the 18th, January 18th. With the ORCA's visitation management team, Al Jacke, John Moss, Fear Trails Director of Park and Facility Operations, Drew Kalinsky, Chelsea Anderson from About Work. And this was the first meeting that we had our engineering consultant in place, George Shakamar.
By our engineer consultant, you mean? The data committee is engineer.
Exactly. Thank you. So the meeting was conducted around a series of slides compiled by About Work that organized VDC's previously submitted recommendations, responses to ORCA ORCA's two December 23 reports, Village and Cold Spring Visitation Management visitor utilization study and results. The ORCA data will generate the visitation data and the data committee scrutinized the ORCA data. The analysis flow goes like this. It's the user study into the visitation project, which will inform affected environmental alternatives, analysis, conclusion into the simulation model which ORCA is working on now. So that'll be the next big presentation that we get will be the model, the pedestrian flow model. So we have to be careful with that because they're very hypnotizing these, these programs where, oh, look, they're, they're they're graphic people moving around, and that's good enough for me, but it means nothing unless the the data that they're built on has really been vetted well. So that's what we were getting into in this meeting. Started with them giving us back responses on slides of our recommendations not to use that a metric that they were going to implement something called a level of service analysis methodology. The engineer felt that that was not an appropriate, appropriate methodology for this model that was more for densely urban areas where crowds were going from point A to point B. They kind of conceded on that point. So this is, this is a indication that, you know, we we got professional help. We got somebody who could slow, you know, slow things down, and he did, and and won concession on, on points. So from there, the methodology went, the emphasis was more on actual counts that ORCA did, or is the pedestrian surveying company. They're handling that part of the project. And we were told that the counts are done with a plus minus accuracy of five percent. And that repetition and averaging improves the PAOTs. So that's great. And then they let us know that something we've been asking about for quite a while was confirmed, and that is that camera data was captured by AKRF, the vendor who's doing the DGIS. And and they will compile it.
It says county, street counting, cart vehicle counting?
It's, it's pedestrians at intersection.
Is that camera that, like, camera that's on Fair Street?
Right. And and that was, that was also something that was vaguely, I had been asking about between the cameras and the tubes that count, you know, vehicle traffic. Who is, who has that data? And can we see it? Right. But that was not, never really responded to. The response is always that may be DOT, that could be state DOT. We don't know. And even in this meeting, it was, we don't know about it, but I said, well, here's the picture of the camera on Fair Street, the one you're talking about. And then who, whose camera is that? Surprise. AKRF, the vendor was tri-state. And there's still an issue because we've asked, well, of course, our engineer, George, is saying that is what he would like to review.
The raw data from the.
Exactly. They're saying there's privacy issues because, you know, there are people in the video, so they are holding that as a roadblock.
They said they don't usually give that out.
So, so, but even if you didn't get the video data, could you just get the counts like this day at these hours? Are you getting that?
Yeah, that's what we'll ask for.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So James, we have, we have a limited time. So if you want to get to the the heart of what you're asking or wanting us to know about this evening.
Exactly. Okay, so it all came down to asking them to revisit one of the alignments that I thought was overlooked, and that alignment in the route alternatives analysis is alignment number two. The one that starts at the north end of the depot service area goes on the east side of the tracks and can either go east at the south end of South Corner of Mayor's Park on Fair Street, then down to Little Stony Point or continue along the tracks to Little Stony Point. The reason being is that is the least obtrusive and most efficient of the five that were presented, but was dismissed out of hand because of the constraints of holding adhering to Metro North's twenty five foot offset. And I felt like, well, you know, you're, you're kind of, I don't want to say hiding behind that, but it's making it too easy to say, well, it has to be twenty five feet, and if the the only way to use, to use that to make it twenty five feet just north of the depot is to actually start blasting rock. So I went there and that's when I just took these real basic pictures that showed, well, when you're, when you're on the platform at the station on the east platform, you're only, you're only six feet from the rail itself, so the center line would be about eight feet. Then went on to the service area at at Depot and Depot Restaurant. And the corner of this fence is only seven feet away. As you go down and maintain that seven foot distance, if if you were just imagine that the fence was, you could just go to the next picture. I'm sorry, the the one after this. So you can even see the fence in the background. So if that's seven feet, if that's approximately the same distance as what they're allowing here, and there's all of this room to the east, which was about fifteen, averaging about fifteen feet, then why, why should that route, which will cause the least disturbance of any residences be eliminated and also won't require constructing what, what appears to me to be the preferred route is almost like more of an attraction that will be a magnet. It won't be something that will get people, getting people to the trails. It will draw people who have no intention of hiking to enjoy promenading up and down this, which will just bring more traffic in. So that is what I presented to them. There was a little bit of consternation about being in the right of way.
So James, I can follow up from there.
Then you would say from there.
Yeah, so we did have communications with Amy, with the executive director from HHFT. And last, I believe it was last Thursday, Mayor Winward, Supervisor Ben Tassel, Legislature Montgomery, Rebecca from HHFT, Amy, the executive director, and board member Richard Shea met at the train station and did have a look at these locations that James is talking about. This particular location, the east side of the track configuration is something that has been talked about for many years. There has also been discussion, or there was discussion that day of the west side, which has wider clearances. What, what this boils down to is what the MTA is willing to tolerate in terms of setbacks, et cetera, and just like with our planning process, a goal in in our zoning when we're approving projects is not expanding nonconformities. That's an issue for the MTA as well. So we agreed on that site after having, having observed, taken photographs, discussed that day that that John and Chris and I would approach Metro North and have some continued conversations. So we did reach out to our local board member, Neil Zuckerman, who is also the chair of the Budget Committee for MTA. So he's in a good position to help. And he is getting some information from us from the MTA perspective related to the question of setbacks and approvals to date, et cetera. So we did follow up with the recommendation that you made, and it's, it is, it is simply the facts that this is, that is the area where the fewest impacts on residential properties happens. So it's a discussion to be had, and we're going to learn a lot more, of course, when HHFT makes its presentation on the 11th, the 11th. And by then we may have new information to add into the mix. I think you said that your data committee had been pushed off.
Yeah, we keep getting pushed.
I mean, I think they're responding. They're responding to feedback and 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 addressing things, you know, looking at the questions that are being raised, which is, you know, that's the best we can hope for is, is to be heard. Yeah.
Two things. I I hope the reason that it's being pushed back is that the, that alignment is being built into their model to see how it impacts pedestrian circulation. That's the whole, the whole point. When I had asked at this meeting that I was referencing before, did you, did you build the model to include the five route alternatives? They said, no, just the preferred one. So again, it's this thing of, it's not being handed a fait accompli. And I also thought of your research that found multiple examples of trails that are abutting rail lines just is a more, more proof that this is not, not unusual.
Thank you very much for your ongoing work. This is not the end of this discussion. Obviously, we just wanted to get to, to hear from you. We had planned to hear from you earlier and had to reschedule, so thank you for coming in tonight.
We have a meeting scheduled for next, become Thursday.
Great.
And then there's a public meeting, I guess, on the eleventh. I've signed up for that.
And just for the, for the public, if you have a visit to the H H F T website, there is a, an analysis. There are three videos related to the alternative routes analysis and it's very helpful to to watch them and, and have a look at the graphics detailing why alternatives were eliminated. Go ahead.
So I guess I want, I want to thank you for, I, I saw the exchange very quickly organizing, you know, the mayor of Nelsonville, supervisor and representative.
Zuckerman?
Yeah.
Oh, Nancy.
Yeah, just to do the walk, right? And then, and then following up from there. Do we know if there is a, of, you know, I, I, I see that it's it's just the, the, the local governments who are approaching the M, the M T A. Do we know if there's a participation and, and willingness to hear what comes out of it from the Georgia?
I would imagine so, sure. Yeah, I mean, Amy has, has asked, has asked us to give it a try, see what, see what feedback you get, if it's different than ours. There is ongoing conversation for sure. Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. So good night. Okay. Now the moment you've all been waiting for, budget discussions.
We can stay for the budgets.
You're welcome to stay.
I bet they would miss the rain. Enjoy.
Okay. Notes. Kind of printed. So a few notes about the village budget. We operate on a fiscal year of June one to May thirty-first. There are three funds in the village budget, general fund, water and sewer. Developing the budget is a collaborative, collaborative process among the trustees and village staff with consideration of public input. Budget formulation is a process of drafting, revising and improving through a multi-session workshop process. So we're going to talk about things multiple times, or there are going to be changes in our spreadsheets as we work through problem solving. Tonight, the discussion is broad brush, talking about the overall goals we'd like to establish for the next budget year. And we'll be taking comment on our, that budget discussion this evening, and there'll also be a public hearing before the budget's passed. So that I will hand it to Michelle. Who, and Michelle Escalas, Lulu is the village accountant.
The first topic would be the tax levy. The tax levy, common misconception, it's two percent is the tax cap. And although there is a law, two percent is the tax cap, there's a lot of factors that go into it, so that two percent is not the end all be all. So for this year, there's four factors that come up to the maximum tax levy the village can raise. Factor number one is your tax base growth. This is property changes, new development additions, things that increase your tax role based on changes to actual properties. For this year, it's small, it's point oh oh two six. In the past, this has been higher.
The fact of the asset that we handed out for the P V A is the
Got it, there you go.
So for this year, the tax base growth allows the village to increase taxes forty-eight hundred dollars. The next factor is the tax levy growth. This is two percent or the cost of inflation. This is where that two percent cap comes into play. It's two percent this year. So that gives the village another thirty-seven thousand. I'm talking in round numbers for discussion sake.
And just for clarity, you meant forty-eight thousand, not forty-eight hundred, right? And the last number that you?
No, I meant forty-eight hundred.
Oh, it's bottom, got it, okay. But the growth factor, right?
The third factor is something that's new to the village is you're allowed to exclude throw in expense items from your tax cap. For the village, you can exclude the one percent of the salaries for employees in the employee and police pension systems. This one percent is seventeen hundred dollars. It allows us to increase taxes seventeen hundred dollars. This date comes up with this, if the exclusions are eligible or not, and they have not been in the past, this is a new year. The fourth and final factor that goes into the tax levy calculation is for the village, a rollover amount. You cannot assess the full rollover amount, which is the amount that you did not assess last year. There's some formulas and based on the formulas, it comes out to twenty-eight thousand six hundred. So for the past two years, the village has not raised taxes the maximum that it could. Also, in the past, the max amounts were a little higher based on tax base growth was higher. So this year, you put all these numbers together. The village is allowed to raise taxes seventy-two thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. So that seventy-two thousand is a three point one percent increase over last year.
Can I ask about the carryover? Does that mean that this is, if we took all of that now, then we would have a much smaller amount to raise taxes?
This year.
For the following year, right? Like if it's a carryover and we use a ball of our carryover.
Carry only, only lasts one year. And the carryover ends up.
Oh, okay, so it's just, okay, it's just from the past. Oh, but that, but if we raise the taxes the maximum amount.
This year, including the carryover.
Including the carryover, then we will have very little. And we won't have a carryover the following year. So we should just keep that in mind in terms of like ability to grow the.
Of course, our, our tax base, base growth factor looks smaller than in recent years because Butterfield, the Butterfield development was a big part of calculation, that was a big new development. And we haven't had anything that size.
Are on a couple of year lag by the time everything hits. So that's where we're at, seventy-two thousand increase in revenue, which is three point one percent increase from last year. That doesn't equate to an actual three point one percent, you know, on the tax bill. We're talking about total revenue that the village can collect.
And if we don't take that carryover, it's lost anyway. So it's not like it would be carried over.
Right, because it doesn't continue.
Yeah, so.
But it's not law, it's, it's funny that people thought that they, it's, it's higher taxes for residents, right?
Right, right, but the potential for.
It's not like it's a grant that we aren't using or something.
Right, yeah.
If you do not raise that twenty-eight thousand, however, you raise every other category to the max, there will be no carryover the next year because the carryover is only one year. This twenty-eight thousand is from last year. If we don't raise that twenty-eight, we lose it. And if you raise everything else to max, you still lose it. So this would be essentially the last year of the carryover if everything else can hit the max.
Okay. But so we, okay, so it's a prudent.
Well, opportunity if you don't take it. Or greetings to the villagers.
But we should raise that one first before the other.
You're thinking of sort of hierarchy?
I'll look into that to see if you can do that. I don't think you can. For reference, three years ago, the max was a hundred and eleven thousand, last year it was eighty-eight, and this year it's twenty-two, so it is going down. How does the board feel about tax levy and where we should end up?
I mean, I think we should be striving to be to not exceed to not exceed the two percent.
I believe Phillips Town increased their tax above the cap, right? And that, of course, affects us as well because we're all Phillips Town.
I mean, they had, they had significant expenditures related to the Garris Landing Water District.
It was pretty exceptional, too.
It was really super exceptional.
They haven't raised it.
And we would have to follow the same, if we were to do that, we would have to follow the same process. Phillips Town, we'd have to have a public hearing about exceeding the cap and we'd have to have a majority vote. But I think what Michelle's looking for is, as a baseline.
I was looking at going over the cap, I was asking up to the cap.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think we need to sort of figure out what our goals are for this year. Like, do we need that additional twenty-eight thousand dollars to meet all of our budgetary goals? Or not? Can we, can we, you know, slide by as is? We have some, some big expenses we're looking at. Capital projects. Even if it's only twenty-eight thousand, it's, it's something that helps get us closer.
Laura and I have been working on a, a capital projects worksheet and what I brought in for us to look at tonight, and this obviously will be available on the website, is a portion of, of the data set that we're looking at. So we have identified categories of projects, the names of projects filled in, estimated costs where we know them, where we have them from the engineers. Sort of rated them for criticality, identified the stage they're in and what we have available for funding or not. The other part of the spreadsheet is, is sort of the sunnier side of the spreadsheet, and that is what Laura has identified as grant opportunities. So that's another discussion to have. But I think getting these numbers in our minds, I mean, the ones that we have, the ones that we have numbers for, none of them are small. The Fair Street culverts are estimated at a million and a half with, with resiliency upgrades. Fishville and Mountain currently estimated at seventy thousand, which is a limited design pending our larger stormwater study. The Fish Street culvert replacement with resiliency, sixty thousand. The repairs at Backbrook, where it crosses Main at between church and Garden, eighty-six thousand dollars. Dam repairs all told, upper and lower, it's about thirteen million dollar project. We do, there have got fifty thousand dollars in firehouse repairs that need to happen. There is, the firehouses pursuing a grant for that work. So we don't, we don't have all of our numbers yet. The numbers we have are big and it's going to take, it's going to take some serious consideration of how we combine passion at hand with, with grants, with bands and bonds. And I think one of the goals that we should have is building in the one project that's read, that is the closest to, to, to going, is ready to go out to bid, is the Fair Street culverts. I think we need to, as a goal, build in some kind of debt payment or, or cash payment toward what we know to be happening in the next year.
So when we're talking about these numbers, I think it's helpful to talk about the potential that the village would actually have to pay. So my understanding is this one point five, it'd be a twenty percent match from the village. So still a large number, but it's three hundred thousand. You know, so capital planning projects, if you were to ban anything other than water and sewer, and even some water and sewer, you have to pay it back in five years. Ban in the short term loan. If you were to bond something, it's going to be a twenty to thirty year payment. Every time you issue a bond, there is significant upfront costs to get it. So the thought is to take out a couple bands and by the time your five-year mark is up, you've converted all this stuff to a bond. So it gives you the opportunity to see how many projects you can get going in that five-year period. And then at the end of that fifth year, lump them together, get a fixed interest rate, bands are also market. So we've had bands that have been a half a percent. And the current band is three point eight nine percent, you know, it's the market. A bond would be a fixed payment schedule for the twenty, thirty years she's full of, of the project. But a debt payment built into the general fund, I think, is important if these projects are going to keep happening. And that is going to be a large number to insert into the budget. Anytime you insert something into a budget, it's hard. Once it's there, you can keep it going more easily. But to create a space to be able to insert a thirty, fifty, seventy thousand dollar payment, we have to figure that out.
And we have the, the reality that we are in a situation of largely flat revenues this year with parking, et cetera. We have, hopefully in the year to come, we'll see those numbers rise, but we don't have a lot of wiggle room in this year. Planning, we're planning for next year, I mean. I, I do feel very, just so that everyone doesn't sit at the table sobbing, I think we, we have, you know, we have been working with FEMA, we are now working with the Federal Highway Administration for large portions of these big projects. The process is going to take time. Laura has been doing a ton of, of research on grants. We have some leads, we're taking meetings with different agencies. So we're not looking to, we're not looking to find all of these numbers within our budget. There are other avenues. And I feel like you're making strong progress in that area.
I think it's good, I guess one thing that I think about is that there is a timeline to, like with a lot of these projects, you have to do planning, design, engineering, like that phase, and then you do construction. And if we want to get grants for both of them, it takes longer, right? You have to like wait for the grant to open and then apply for it and then maybe get the money. And then once you have it for the planning, and then do the planning design and then apply for the money for the construction. So figuring out how to do that with all of these things at like near-term one to three is tough. So there are some places where we might want to consider, could we pay for the, are there any places where we could pay for a design if we need to speed it up? I haven't looked into that, but I do think that like expecting to do everything with grants.
It's not going to happen. It's a challenge. It's not going to happen. You know, of the things on this list that are the things that are emergent are the Fair Street culverts. The engineer, I sat with the engineers last week. They have specked, they are ready to put together an R F P and take that out to bid. The earliest that could start is in the fall, probably.
Construction?
Right. Construction.
Okay.
And, you know, I think that's, that's being hopeful, we're at. And the dam, obviously, like every day counts with the dam. But there is, it's not a place where the public is passing and said, we're doing, we're doing what we need to be doing with the dam in terms of looking at routes, talking with the property owner, working on the engineering, working on the, the larger grants for the larger project. Of these things, the Fair Street culverts is the emergent one because of the parking lot revenue and obviously public safety passing over. Fishville and Mountain, we can stabilize with both patches and sandbags. The Fish Street culvert replacement, right now it is, it is stable with sandbagging, et cetera. We're keeping, keeping it clear, et cetera. The tunnel repairs is a larger conversation we need to have with M T A. And then obviously the Cedar Street, the stormwater, all of these other stormwater items depend on what we learned from the H and H study. Um, so for example, where our engineers are looking at the seventy thousand dollars at Fish Gill and Mountain. They have designed, knowing that, that is a potential reroute. For Back Brook from Cedar, going down mountain and out to Craig Side and out to Northern. Is one of the possible reroutes. So they have designed repairs at Fish Gill and, and. Mountain that address the issues that are there from the storm, but don't cause us to. Spend a ton and then tear it up later. So they're being, they're going light touch on that intersection until we have the larger planning done. Seventy thousand is the light touch.
Do they give a cost proposal on the H and H thing?
Uh, they have not. We just put in, um, what was the grant? How much was the grant for?
It was, it's a, um, we put in that technical assistance request for FEMA, it's in mind, but there's no amount to it.
The FEMA does, okay, FEMA does, okay.
So then our engineers wouldn't do H and H, FEMA would. FEMA professionals.
We were also looking, so this is one of the places where we were looking at a couple grants for the summer, um, one from. Um, that's a regulatory program, and one from another DEC program. And they would fund if a study is something like fifty thousand dollars and their matches are like fifteen percent. So I'm hoping, I don't know, I don't have a number either, but my hope is that a study is in that.
They have an estimate, I didn't, I didn't think to pull it up. I have an estimate from Will. I don't know if that, that was from earlier. I don't know if it holds, given everything we've learned over the last couple of months, but we can refresh that number.
You know, I think when we talk about planning, all the construction is important. I think the first thing to really talk about is how much. Realistically, it will cost in the engineering and the design, the fees and the studies. Um, because that's what's the impact next year's budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, we do have to do long term, but we also have to figure out what needs to be in next year's budget to accomplish the long term project.
I, I think you hit it right on the head. That's where the, that's on these projects, on these, on these issues that we have to address, the bulk of the work. Other than Fair Street, the bulk of the work is for the next twelve month period is the planning and design, the engineering and designs.
And then that brings us to the, the next section, which would be fund balance.
I would say there is a second page, keep in mind.
And these are, for, for the public who review, reviews this document, this is draft. This is not anything that the board has taken any vote on. This is a working document, trying to get all in one place. These big issues that we need to, we do need to address because they haven't been compiled, um, before. So, um. This doesn't mean these things are happening. It doesn't mean they're happening soon. It doesn't say anything about timeline. It's just. A worksheet for us to, to, to work from through the budget. Probably Garden Street repaving, which was a CHIPS project. And the eration at the water treatment plant was a big capital project, uh, the sewer plant, excuse me. Till two thousand seventeen, and that was two thousand sixteen and seventeen.
And two thousand twenty one, there were other sewer plant upgrades, the concrete upgrade, rewinding. Um, there was. A lot of, um, and that was partly EFC funding, partly grant, partly us. So that, although it might not be noticeable like paving, it still happens. So for fund balance, you know, John just talked about the general fund having a one point seven. Fund balance, but that doesn't include that we have allocated three hundred thousand for this year that we're in. And we're gonna spend it all, and we're gonna spend some of it on maintenance for lost revenue to do the parking, unfortunately, it's reality. Um, so then that brings us down to one point four six. You know, if expenses go up, that number will come down if we don't have more revenue by the end of the year. Um, usually I could do a pretty good calculation of where we're gonna end up. Right now, I think we're gonna be like four thousand in a deficit by May. So in years past, yes, this number has been high where the fund balance keeps growing. Or we're trying to figure out one time purchases, um, but that's not this year. But.
In perspective, last year, we had enough to buy the Tahoe.
And also. It's not, um. It's not planning to accumulate cash. It's the projects have been anticipated and not completed. And I think this is one of the things, another one of the, the goals we need to talk about for this budget is. Actually getting things done. I mean, the storm, the storm this year kind of threw off everything we had planned with CHIPS, with, with. Roadways and facilities, everything got thrown, blown out of the water. Um, but thinking about optimizing the resources that are available to us. Where we have been stuck in the past, I think, is getting through a proper. RFP development and bidding process and getting a project out. And I think we need to do more of. Getting help from, getting help from Han to get these, these. Larger projects, not the giant capital projects, but larger projects like. CHIPS projects, et cetera, using, using the money we do have to get things done, to get them out the door and done. Um, because we do have, also have CHIPS money that's been unspent. I think, I think Garden Street was the last CHIPS. Fish Gill was going to be our CHIPS project, and then the storm.
Right, so we can't really repay that because we, we might need to reengineer it.
I think we need to, that's right, we do need to reengineer it. We need to, I think we need to identify roadways where. We can make an impact with repairs that will not be upended by later stormwater work. So like I think about Benedict, you know, where. Um, people go in and out of food town, et cetera.
CHIPS I don't like to talk about during budget because although it's important, it is a net zero to the budget. We need to focus on things that impact the budget.
Yes, but in thinking through projects, that's, that's, that's part of.
You know, so the, this fund balance will come back. In how much the board is willing to allocate for one time projects. Rule of thumb, fund balance is not used to balance the budget for operating, it is used for one time project. Um, this current budget year. Um, some things like engineering have been paid out of fund balance, but engineering. You know, you could look at it as one time projects, but towards the future, we should be able to have engineering be funded from operating. Um, we're playing catch up and that's an okay one time. You know, thing because they are independent projects. But those are bigger goals that we should try and move forward towards, not paying. Engineering out of fund balance, or, you know, basic storm drain repairs was another thing that we pulled out of fund balance to be able. To have the budget where we ended up. But you know, six thousand in storm drain, minor repairs, not necessarily big replacements of catch basins. Should also become a more operating, kind of.
So, um, in that case then, like the three hundred thousand dollars that the village might have to foot. The bill for, for the Fair Street culverts could be pulled out of the fund balance. What's the difference between that and bonding it or ban, doing a ban?
So that's a village board discussion, and that's like the age old thing, what's better, pay for cash or leverage debt? It's, it's opinions. You can look at that like a mortgage, because a bond becomes a mortgage, it's an investment for thirty years. You know, bands are short term borrowing, think like a credit card, um, or cash is cash.
Right, but you were saying that if we, you know, have a payment that's the same every year, then that. Gets built into the budget, not fund balance. So that means suddenly we have to find, you know, whatever. Exactly, so that, that becomes more of a challenge than picking out a fund balance.
It depends, I think, a little bit on what we want the fund balance to be, right? I mean, if, if, you know, I. Didn't bring the charts, but we, you know. Right? I mean, the general fund balance has gone up a lot over the last. And, um, you know, in, in a sense. That's healthy, but in another sense, I think we're talking, you know, this is all capital projects that we never executed on, right? We allocated money towards, and we didn't do it, and we did it again the next year, and I said, that's you. Some of it's, I think, you know, during COVID, some. We had expenses lower than expected, or revenue higher. Both, great, so it still went up, but. You know, the, the, the amount on the other sheet. Is, you know, how much is the, the fund balance relative to the budget amount? And, you know, so this is all the revenue and expenditure for the year versus sits on top of the fund balance. I think I got that right, you know? And so here as well, and so, you know, I probably not a good analogy, but I think about my bank account. You know, I just always like seeing a certain amount in there, that kind of a minimum, right? And then I can go up and down. And I think, um. Um, so if we, you know, right now, the, the fund balance is about fifty three percent of the, the total. So if we, uh, of, of the revenue part here, maybe, maybe that's too high, right? Maybe we want that more around thirty percent or twenty percent.
I think that the percentage is also a little skewed because it's one point seven, or really it's one point four. Um, still high, but it's not quite more than half.
I think, and we want, that's. We do wanna think about. You do that a few years and all of a sudden, the fund balance is gone. So we have to be. And how many, yeah, that wasn't that long, yeah, that wasn't that long.
But you want products done, and so. Gotta spend money to get things done.
Yeah, yeah, I just saying like, that's not a, it's not a sustainable. It's just, it's a smart thing to do just to catch up, but it. Clearly, it's not a strategy that's.
If there are immediate needs and we do have cash to pay for them without. Raising taxes, right, just further.
Yeah, it's fund balance and the general fund. Um, the water fund fund balance typically is allocated every year to keep paying for dam engineering and. You know, so it's, you know, going fifty, sixty thousand allocated. Um, and that's going, is happening now, and engineering is running up, so the fund balance. Is going to start going down more. It also, um, will go down because we did the tax file aqueduct. You know, it's, it's a capital projects, but the water fund ends up paying, you know, for half of it. We were able to borrow one eight, hundred eighty five on the van. The other portion of that three hundred and something thousand dollar project has to come out of somewhere, and it's gonna come out of the fund balance on the water. Sewer, sewer has always had the lowest fund balance. And sewer ends up being the most costly fund. So we're at two sixteen on the sewer fund. But relative to sixteen, look at the, the tax file aqueduct project, it's cost over three hundred thousand dollars. So if an emergency happens in the sewer plant, that's three hundred thousand dollars. You know, two sixteen, relative to that is not a significant chunk of money. You know, so the fund down conversations, um, it's all relative, and the controller does. Suggests that, you know, the board come up with policies and things that they're comfortable with, um, and where they wanna target that fund balance to be.
Um, I feel like there was some point where you mentioned, um, passing, like savings accounts, so that we're not just.
So there are reserve accounts, there are legal reserve accounts. When you put money in a reserve account, it has to stay there. For that purpose, if they're ready to spend it. Those reserve accounts would be if the board wanted to intentionally save tax dollars. Right now, the fund balance happens, for lack of better terminology, by accident. It's, there's no intention for that to happen. It's not a slush fund. It is a fund balance, which is extra money that is left over. Um, because revenues were higher or expenses were lower, things didn't get done. It was never intended to build that fund balance. It just happened through the years. For a multitude of reasons. If you wanted to intentionally save, then you would build in. I wanna say ten thousand dollars towards this reserve, eight thousand dollars every year towards this reserve. And now those come from your operating, and they come from your tax revenue or departmental revenue, anything else that the village is burning in. Those, there's no point to take the fund balance and lock it up in a reserve. It's already saved. But if you wanted to save for the future, then that on purpose, then you do that.
The fund made process is generating it interest, yes.
Yes, I have, it, it all money marketing account.
And you reserve, if we had a reserve account, it would also. Um, I mean, if we have this long list of projects, we might wanna save for them. Potentially.
It is.
There are legal reserves. I don't know the ins and outs of what can legally be. I know, like, for example, you can have a reserve fund for buses. Reserve fund for sewer, which is what John was talking about. There's eight, eighty three hundred dollars left over from. A sewer reserve front from ten years ago, and it can only be used for sewer repairs or something else. So we, if the board goes that route, be very careful on what you select, because once it's there, that's it. There's no taking it out unless you're paying for a pension. Um, and our pension payments aren't that high to reallocate, that's money like that.
Also, um, thinking about that. I mean, you'd have to. You'd have to choose some portion. We're not gonna be able to save enough for most any of these. Projects on a timeline that actually produces anything. So that might be a longer, if you were doing that, I think you would have to start. And with, you'd have to start with something that had a long horizon, right? And a long, and a period to save where it actually made a difference. Setting aside eight thousand or ten thousand right now is sort of chump change for most of these projects.
And the number can be whatever you want it to be, and if that number became fifty thousand, you're at that point, should that fifty thousand be a debt payment? And then you're, you know.
Do it right now, don't save up for it.
Well, and the, and the reality is, the infrastructure projects that we're dealing with. We're on, we're on borrowed time, as, as it is, um. We've got stuff failing all around us, so.
Yeah, this is a very long.
Sort of sounds like, in the general fund. We'll show an iteration of the budget where the tax levy is raised at its max. And there will be a significant allocation. This year it was three hundred thousand, last year it was three twenty seven. Um, with the intention of doing big projects, we can keep it around there for illustration purposes, and see where we end up. Um, so then in water and sewer, last budget cycle, it is thought that maybe. The water and sewer rates increase as inflation increase, increases. So instead of doing it when it's needed, you have small percentages consistently. For illustration purposes, I just put three percent, five percent, they could see whatever the board's comfortable with.
Most don't go down, you know, in those categories.
Yes, and these are percentage increases on the usage, not the flat rates. So we can change whatever the board proposes, um. But the thought last year was if you increase the usage, it's, people have slightly more control over that. If you were to raise usage, you know, three percent in water, that's ten cents per thousand gallons. And three percent in sewer is six cents per thousand gallons.
I still think that's the, the right approach, where your people are paying by use, right? And you have incentive to, you have incentive to reserve and not leave, not leave things dripping and.
And the flat, so the flat rate and then build in, um, a percentage for the usage of the water and sewer budget.
Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, we want to start with three percent of the five percent, but I think five percent, given. Cost right now, where we are.
I think I'd like to see where three percent gets us. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say it without. Without seeing the cost.
For rev, other exchanges and sources of revenue, um, that I'm aware of, um, distracting on Main Street. Uh, Main Street parking was budgeted, um, for like. Eight or nine months in this budget season, cycle. So next year, it's not, even though it wasn't implemented, it's not gonna be a huge incremental increase. Because you're only moving from a nine months of budgeted to twelve months of budgeted. Occupancy tax also was budgeted for, you know, a few months of the year. Occupancy tax also was budgeted for, you know, a few months of the year.
Can I help them with that? Just a quick, just to bring you guys up to speed. I have worked out a draft. Jeff and Michelle have commented on it, so it's ready for, it's been sent to John. Um, to the village attorney. Occupancy tax legislation. So I don't know how that works in the calendar of what we're doing right now, but I have a draft for you to review. I think Eliza read through it.
Yeah, it's like the.
Apparently, the budget says we're already collecting it, so.
Been a lot of things in the last year. It's been a wild year.
The third is STR revenue. I don't think it's wise to include that. Uh, we still, still have parking and occupancy worked out. STR is a lot more work.
Actually doesn't need a lot more work. It needs, it needs finalization. The attorney sent us, sent a recent, uh, an update. I sent that to Jen, as chair of that committee, to look and compare it and make any recommendations for what we need. Then we need to get that back on the table. It'd be hard to do either of those during budget season, obviously.
Right, but I think Michelle's point is, we were optimistic last.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree. She looks, she looks pretty optimistic sitting over there, doesn't she?
Can I ask you a question? Just going back to the, um, capital project discussion, the stormwater projects, would they come out of? Which budget do they, which fund do they come out of?
If the stormwater was going through the sewer plant, you know, different things, but it's just hollow.
Okay, um, and, uh, clean water state revolving fund seems like a good option for lower. Right, if we can use that for the stormwater projects.
It's subsidized, so whatever the market interest rate is on a bond, it's half.
Yeah, okay, so that's the way we could pursue for that. For that, you need to have, to even get in line, you need to have engineering done.
Those, those are very shovel-ready before the approvals.
Yeah, yeah, so I think. The focus is, the focus is engineering in this budget.
Yeah, yeah. So, one topic, that's one grant, that's a good thing to talk about. When New York State funding and federal funding. Federal funding would be FEMA, you know, so anything that's paid for by FEMA right now is seventy-five percent with a twenty-five percent match. Sometimes the state can come in and contribute something. They have not made that declaration yet.
They adjusted for Nelsonville last week. The state's gonna pay twelve and a half percent for Nelsonville's, um, share, and I think it's worth us asking.
Yeah.
There is the potential that a number of our projects are shifting to federal highway administration. It's a conversation for another time. Um, but those that remain on, on, with FEMA will still have that match. And Nelsonville got it, it's worth, it's worth asking.
Um, so then for the federal one, that's an eighty percent, federal highways, emergency recovery, eighty percent. The twenty percent match for the village. Other federally funded projects, like, um, the Main Street project that, um, was done a couple of years ago. Was eighty percent federally funded, and then the state has a matching program where they put up ten or fifteen percent. So that, those are harder to get that matching, so that the village only had to pay five percent for that project. So there are layers, um, but anytime we talk about funding or grants, more often than not, there's gonna be. At a minimum, a twenty percent match. You know, some are twenty-five, some are fifteen, but twenty percent is usually the rule. Docking for Sea Streak, um, I know it's early on, um, but that's, if they're going to do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's. Um, got us some extra revenue. Um, is that still on the table for this year?
We need to reach out to them. I, I, um. I have, I'm worried about Sea Streak. I think, no, they use, it, it seems that it was a struggle for them last year. And I think we need to get a sense pretty quick from him about what it's looking like. Yeah.
You know, the Fridays, it went from like, you know, high twenties to like thirty-six thousand by adding those Fridays in. So it's enough to consider to make changes to the budget if they're not gonna do Friday, or the board doesn't want them to. Any other revenue that anybody can think of?
Sea Streak might ask to extend it into the summer again. They ask every year, they usually, last time they didn't even get it together to get. A proposal on the table in time, but if they were to propose that, would we entertain it?
It's a lot of ifs.
Yeah, it is a lot of ifs.
So it's a lot of ifs.
Chances it's all getting together with this timeline, like, you know, it's already March, so.
Uh, they have, they really struggled when they, when they did manage to get it earlier in the season, they really struggled to sell tickets.
Probably not gonna happen.
I don't, I just don't think we could rely on it. You can ask him, but I wouldn't rely on it. And I think too, you know, there's, again, that's one of the, that's one of the areas where we can control flow of people. It's one of the few areas where we can control flow of people. It's income, but at what point does the income cost too much in terms of quality of life? Um, that's a real question. Provide, I mean, of the sales tax, um, they've kind of. Mentioned ideas of being able to send requests. So it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, pro, it was proposed from the county executive, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars competitive. To be shared among, to be divided among six towns and three villages. It was, it's not even worth putting in an application form, but it doesn't matter, because it got to the legislature and was cut right away. That the state of the county, I'm sorry, not the state of the county, the budget proposal, no, state of the county, state of the county is next Thursday. Maybe it's this Thursday, it's this Thursday, and we'll see what he puts forward and what they're willing to say yes to. But so far, it's been a great big nothing. Having said that. I wanna make sure we acknowledge in the public record that the departments, the county departments have been fantastic to us. Over the last year, um, there, where, where we've got work going on with the IP department to get the village's GIS. Records into their system and the licenses held at the county level. The highway department has been hugely helpful. We've had really good, um, cooperative work with the planning department. So on a, on a day-to-day level, the relationship is improving. It's, it, where we get stuck is the legislature. And not just we, but every municipality, but the county.
And meanwhile, our roof is literally.
Meanwhile, our roof is literally leaking while we're talking, yeah.
So moving from revenue to expenses, I have met with the larger departments, what they just need to go over their large request. Police department, their large request, things that their papers are outdated. The new painters are late to the body cameras, so this becomes a software licensing cost.
My sentence is a, a wish list. It's not a, it's not a need, it's a wish, is that right? I don't know that I interpreted it, um, when you wish, but, I mean, I think we, well. Okay, let me, let me rephrase that, now that I said that. The tasers are out of date. So we, we need to do something. This, this, as I understand it, is the only company. Right, that does this type of business. Like any technology software moving forward, they're, they've built in all these other costs and basically you are. You get married to this company with their taser and the licensing and so on. I take, but I guess what I'm trying to clarify, as I understand it. The tasers that we have right now are older models. They're not, they do not have the level of. They don't have the level of effectiveness, um, that the newer ones do. And they're, the new ones, when you draw tas, tasers don't get drawn very often here, clearly. When they do get drawn, it turns the camera on automatically. Cameras, the cameras have to be tapped on, otherwise they'd be running all the time. So when an officer engages with a member of the public, they're tapped. He says, I'm turning on my camera and they're tapped. It was one drawn a year ago, and Larry reported having drawn one, one time. Since two thousand, what's the year he started? Fifteen, sixteen? So it's, it is an infrequent use. That's why I'm asking, given everything else, is it a, is it a need or a wish?
I don't know that I, I don't know that I feel comfortable articulating whether it's a need or a wish, but I do understand that the, the components we have are out of contract.
They're no longer supported. So it's a conversation we need to have with Larry as a board.
Yes.
I'm just, and, and the scale of things that we, in my mind, and the scale of things that, overall, we need as a village. And that our officers need, it's, for me, it's lowered down the list, um, for the amount that they're used.
Well, the next big item would be Granicus. If there's no STR revenue, um, and I get that, the thought is you might need Granicus to get the revenue going. Is it something that needs to be in this budget, or can it be another fifteen months off?
It's the software that monitors.
Yeah, STR, yeah, strike. With multiple monitors. It's fifteen thousand eight hundred for the month, because the, the board had last.
It allows us to enforce, but then we need somebody who actually operates it.
Which is part of the, the larger discussion of.
What the expected revenue from STRs? The cost of the software is fifteen thousand dollars?
Which I don't know.
Permits, I think, were being proposed at like two fifty each.
Um, and then you have.
I mean, the upside of it, like, the, the big takeaway is it's very different than parking as the new revenue source. It's a lot of. Yeah, there's a lot of management that goes into it, staff time, enforcement. So it's still positive. I mean, I think we still landed on the net positive, but it's not really.
Yeah, I think equal. It, it would pay for, like, the, the revenue would pay for the Granicus.
We don't need Granicus to collect tax. Occupancy tax, but it would be occupancy tax, but it would be a manual process until that time. Um, or, you know, some, some process that we. We decide, determined in-house, as opposed to a package. Michelle has pointed out that the easiest occupancy tax revenue is the existing inns and hotels, right?
That's immediate.
And that's immediate and a smaller number. That's not a Granicus need, a larger number, and not a Granicus.
Much easier to administer.
And it's easier to administer.
Right, the, I think the Granicus benefit was that if, if we are putting in the STR. Updates and having people apply for them, then we're capping at forty. If we wanna enforce that forty and make sure that people are just doing it black market. Granicus would be the only way that we could really control that.
I still think it's the right thing, it still thinks the right thing to do eventually, it just may not be, maybe not, this is not the time.
Roadways and facilities, there. Uh, multiple bid requests, uh, first and foremost, their priority request is two new full-time employees. One being a laborer, one being someone with some contractor-type experience. Um, they are also looking for a utility body pickup truck. And a daily pump at the request of the village board or something.
At my request, it's, so the pumps that we're using on Cedar Street are on loan to us from Dishes. Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services, haven't taken them back yet, but they're looking for them. There are a couple of options there. We're going to need them until we have a midterm, a mid, mid. Midterm resolution at Cedar Street. But we're gonna have to keep dealing with the floodwater for a time. We have to have a trash pump to do that. New, and I haven't found state contracts yet, but new, they're about fifty-five thousand dollars. Dishes through, um, the Bureau of Emergency Services has offered two options. One is for us to lease, which we don't tend to do, um, to lease the pumps. And the other is to buy the pumps that they have. The engine hours, um, one of them is seventy-five, and now it was like, I was concerned, are we buying something that's a lemon, right? Um, it's got seventy-five hours on it and they're mostly from us. So, um, Jeff, um, one of the, the roadways and facilities crew members who's also firefighter and knows. Pumps better than any of us, is having, um, is gathering some more information for us to make, be able to make decisions on that.
Do we have a number from them?
Not yet, that's what he's following up with. I know that new, they're around fifty-five thousand. This is also another place we have talked about. It's now budget appropriations for our. Assembly member and senator. Putting an ask in, once we know a number, putting an ask in for help with those as a member item.
It seems like a good member item, it has like a nice.
Yeah, and it's easy story to it, yeah.
And the fourth request is a heavy-duty pressure washer, like, it's fifty-eight hundred. Don't we have one? This one is hot and cold to be able to pressure wash the subway in the mural page.
And streets, so this is the tool, they, the pressure washer they have right now, I think, is also on its last legs. Like, it's failing. It doesn't do hot water, which means it won't work in the subway tunnel. We have that graffiti coating. But you have to use hot water pressure washer to get graffiti off of the.
Know that before.
We, I don't, I guess not. I mean, I, I assumed we had the, the equipment. When I recommended that we use that, but I didn't realize, I mean, we knew we had a pressure, pressure washer, I didn't realize it had to be a hot one, and.
Is it, that it, I mean, has he tried to remove it with the?
Tried and it did not work.
It's been pretty cold. I think he was saying he had to wait until it was warmer.
Right.
To try.
But because he'll have to repaint the surface. And it has to be warm enough for it to dry. But he said this would be useful again if we're, like, removing striping on the streets. And since our parking plan is gonna be changing, evolving, expanding, whatever, um, it'll be something that would be useful there. And what was the price he gave us for that? Fifty-eight hundred. And then he, he always asked.
So, some things are electric. Pressure washers are left, if, I don't know if that one, if that one's electric, then we could potentially use an energy funding for it. Also looking at what counts, so I will say, we need to, for us to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we need to buy a certain number of. Need to bring into our use a certain number of, um, electric landscaping items. So that would be one of them, that would help us.
That would, so many people just hate the, the sound of gas.
Yeah, um, you get to talk to Budsy about. So that's one piece, I mean, five thousand something, a lot. The other things are like three hundred, you know, to get like a lawnmower is like three hundred dollars. That was more what I had in mind.
I don't think that they're really that cheap. I think it's the difference between residential and commercial. You know, for reference, the backpack trailers that they have now are like seven hundred. So to think, uh, that powerful one, with all the batteries and everything, it's probably gonna cost more than seven hundred. And then, so this pressure washer, I believe, is still behind one, so it's a larger one. One that would last like twenty years, maybe not twenty years, but it, it's not like, you know, a two hundred dollar one from Home Depot. That you're gonna get three years out of it and you're gonna have to turn it over again. It's supposed to be a more commercialized one.
I'm remembering him renting, renting a pressure washer when he was prepping for striping. Is that right? Did he rent one?
I'm not sure, but we have rented stuff before and that's.
No, I'm just thinking, um. It had, there, it has failed him in the past. It's not a new, it's not, the, the problems with the pressure washer aren't new problems. And I know he did, he did rent a higher power one to deal with striping.
Um, so we could potentially move that to a sort of the, the bigger ticket items to talk about.
Yeah, so with the employees, you know, he's saying. Um. That it would be helpful to have one employee with a higher skill level with carpentry and contractor experience. So that he can send them and say, go fix that and not have to do it with them. Cause I think right now what we've been hiring sort of entry-level laborers to. Our guys are good and Bugsy can teach them how to do everything, but he's handholding through these processes to train them. How to do every project that I think that's where he's losing management time. Um, so he's asking for.
It's no question they don't have enough people.
Yeah, I mean, we know this and that doesn't mean we have money to cover it, but, um. You know, me, I wonder if we could consider a part-time person who, because.
And what's our, I mean, what, what capacity would we have to?
Add anything to add. Yeah. Questionable.
I mean, I, I know.
Such a, oh, we've never had much success historically with part-time.
That's right.
Even more skilled, but.
It's a thing discussion we had earlier in the evening.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, Michelle and I discussed potentially picking up. Part-time, somebody with carpentry skills and paying them a higher wage so that it's worth their time, but I imagine that's still hard to get. And how much higher, right? Like again, how, where do we have these things? So it's something to consider.
This one is, this one is painful because they work their tails off. And they've given so much this last year. Um, and could really use another set of hands.
Yeah, and they had four people in the past before, when we were doing garbage.
And we had garbage.
Right. So garbage was taken off.
Or full-time with garbage and now we're at three full-time and a part-time.
Figure into this because I know that there's a lot of overtime in that department. I mean, for good reasons, right? There's been tremendous demand on there.
I had, and Bugsy said that overtime, you know, except for storms, both rain and snow. Uh, more regular overtime finishing up projects and things like that would be less.
Right, so. Is the overtime anywhere near the, the amount that? Would be a no person?
But I, I mean, I think there can be a plan to have. Less overtime and then things happen and then it stays, I mean. I I think the intention was to take away garbage and then have less overtime. You know, but you know, so, yeah, but we.
And we're also dealing with a ton of other things that are.
But just the thing, I think it would be tough to budget without, I know that Michelle. Builds a super budget and expectation of overtime and I, and I would be concerned about taking that away. Um, because I think that we do, we ask them to do a lot and they do it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It is also a good question is how close, how close does that money? I mean, there, there, there's going to be unavoidable overtime dealing with storm response.
Sure.
Um, but when, when it's finishing projects, et cetera, et cetera. How much, how much could that get us toward another body? I think it's a reasonable question. Yeah.
Um, and it's probably the answer is nowhere near close, but.
That seemed to be the expression that Michelle made.
Uh, I mean, clearly you can see this, this, the like, the, um, insurance, the health insurance. Um, is what takes a, what sounds like a small, you know, kind of low, the low wage job. The wages are small and then it's more than half of, more than double or double. Um, uh, insurance. That makes the day event really tough.
What's um, what's the truck that he's wanting to replace? Or is it an additional truck?
The two thousand and three truck that used to be water and sewer that they've been using, which is currently utility body.
Are we paying a lot in repairs for that one right now? What's the issue?
Matt stopped using it. And Bugsy picked some of it to get it another year or two and now.
He said it's done.
Twenty-one years.
Um, he does have, was it three other pickup trucks?
Two other pickups and a small dump truck.
So what is he, what was, what would this, in this proposal, what would that be used for? What, what do we need the new truck for?
He wants something to replace the utility, so it's basically like a very huge thing. He walks it like to keep all the tools in, so any project that go out to. They have somewhere to put all their tools. He did say they could outfit one of the trucks they have. With tool stuff, but, um, after the cost of that, it might make more sense to buy a new truck.
Out for the back of a pickup truck, I have no idea what it costs. You say it's ten, twelve grand, you know, to retrofit it. A new pickup, if you take the loan out for three years. If the pickup is sixty, which they're not even at, also probably like fifty. Your loan payment is sixteen, seventeen grand. Should you infuse twelve thousand one time or? Up that payment to sixteen, amortize it over three years and now you have a new truck with the same goal.
Well, and also, all of the trucks are older models, I, it would. I don't see a lot of sense in. Upfitting vehicles that are already. Quite old.
Now, the other overall consideration is the makeup of the fleet.
Yeah.
And, you know. Um, so right now there are two pickup trucks, a small dump truck and the, the large dump truck. Um, and then this O-three. Um, Bugsy has always taken the stance that you need four quadrants, four small trucks to plow. If the O-three can't. Function anymore, you're down to three small trucks to plow your four quadrants or three small trucks and one large, and one large truck.
But right now we only have how many to drive. So we are. But we. Ten, no, because one of our.
It was available. He's not always, he doesn't always able to come in on storms.
We have only three people.
Also, that, when the, when, just throwing this out, when the town plowed for us in the last storm, it's two guys. Mid the whole village. So, I don't, I don't know, do we need four trucks to, it's a, we have, it's a mile square.
This could be a big wish. I think the, the question would be how much longer will that O-three really last?
It sounded like it needed to be retired.
I guess what I'm, I, no question, I mean, it's twenty, it's twenty-one years old. I'm saying I would not, I don't think it's wise to make the decision on. Quadrants and needing four people to plow because clearly. Plow, plowing has been done in the past with fewer trucks and fewer bodies and it was just done in our last storm with two people and two trucks. So I wouldn't use that as the reason to get a new truck. There are other, were other reasons we needed a new truck. Let's entertain those. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Okay, runs the mix too. We are, I think, uh, we're planning to get our first electric vehicle truck. Um, and test it out this year. I think it would be great if we started to transition the whole fleet. Um, and Matt is willing to test it out this year. Um, we can see if it plows and we can see how it functions. Um, and then we could potentially have more funding to put toward more vehicles next year. I mean, that's not a sure.
Was hesitant to see how electric vehicles bow, being all wet and everything.
So that's what we have to figure out.
Um, Michelle, if I go back to our notes from meeting with Bugsy, we actually had three, three pickup trucks in addition to the two thousand three. There was a two thousand three, a two thousand eleven, the two thousand sixteen and the two thousand nineteen. Um.
One of them is a.
Two fifty.
Small dump truck. Technically, I think.
That's a two thousand, well, we have the two thousand one international and then the two thousand twenty-two Kenworth. So those are two, those are two dump trucks. So one of those three pickups.
One of the pickups, I think it's the F-two fifty technically has like a flat bed.
Flat bed. Okay, well, that was the one that we were considering re-outfitting.
Yeah, I have four, twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen, twenty eleven and two thousand three.
Right, we have four pickup trucks and two dump trucks. And.
Yeah, those what you, what you said were just dump trucks?
Those are all, they're.
F-two fifty, F-three fifty.
There was a.
Yeah. So let's get clarity on that, first of all, because of more trucks than we have drivers.
Right, right, exactly. And we, we said that to Bugsy really.
Oh, so he's aware that he's asking for more trucks than he has drivers?
Yeah, he is, it's, it's again. Well, he wants to replace it for that. Two thousand three that is his utility vehicle. So he can, he needs a utility vehicle, one way or the other, either we outfit one or get him a new one. It's kind of what he's saying.
He dumps, right? Here. One.
Four pickups.
But you're saying one of the pickups is.
Being.
Four.
Three, so it's old.
And then these two are.
Those are, it's the F-series, so those are all pickups, yeah. And then what's the utility truck you're talking about? Is it another vehicle?
Three, which was what he got from Matt, the hand-me-down.
And what, it just has like a box on it.
An actual map tie. So that all the drawers are facing outward, like you would see like an inch back.
You open it, like a cabinet on the outside.
Yeah, what, what.
All around.
The form that gave him that truck is the question. Cause he must have been using something. I'm sure it's nice to have, but.
I think it, it would be useful to do. To do. A site visit to see what we're talking about. Um, and sort out what the need is. We've. Crazy to have more vehicles than we can drive.
It allows him to have the tools with him when he goes on a job as opposed to going back to the garage.
I get it and it dropped, but it comes back to what, to what Michelle was saying about fitting out then. Maybe then fitting out does make sense. If you've got, can one, if one of the vehicles is such a mess, can one of the vehicles be got rid of? And another vehicle be up. Um, not upgraded, but, um. Upfitted.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we.
We would need prices on that setting. Um, we had preliminary conversations. These are the things that.
Yeah.
You know, we don't make decisions in small meetings. We bring the big ass.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So. Follow-up for pricing.
Yeah.
Um, Matt's conversation for water and sewer is the only big ask. Aside from, we need upgrades and capital planning projects and stuff at the plant.
Yep.
But the big, um, everyday ask, I guess, um, is an additional labor.
No question. Yeah, they, the, both of those teams need four people.
They have to be on. So they're a seven-day. They're a seven-day crew. They have to be to operate the plant and they're rotating that amongst their people, including the manager. Which is, um, a lot.
Yeah, there's always overtime on that.
There has been discussions in the past and it's, though, very large conversation. To change, possibly to shift work. But it may affect multiple departments. It's, it's a big conversation that somebody would have to do a lot of research on. But Matt's not opposed to it. Matt actually the one that brought this up. Um, like two cycles ago.
Yeah, and we, we, we've started down this path with the employee handbook and it is, um. It's a giant tangle.
Is there ever possibility of splitting one full-time person between the two different departments?
Do you know that? They share. So there's one employee in the water department that helps, like. When Bugsy needs to lower a sewer, sewer cover or something like that, they're, they'll lend the, the laborer to help with that.
So long as it's a joint task, um, they're not lending laborers like to go cut grass or something like that. It's. You know, roadwork on sewer pipes, that's a joint task, so they'll lend each other to the other department for that. Um, joint, having one full-time split, um, could be possible and just paid out of different funds. It becomes a bigger question for management and payroll and timesheets and things like that. Um, but it's.
Would it, so when we added Jared, we were, we were adding another licensed operator and that was, that was pricey because he's got expertise. What about another? Um, another, I don't know what Scott's, how Scott is classified, but he is not a licensed operator. What about another position like that? How does that shift expenses?
Well, Matt's only asking for a laborer right now.
He's not asking for operator.
No, he's, he's looking for. Someone that he could potentially teach or even just have that extra set of hands to do projects. Um, yeah, so we've been using eighteen an hour at entry level of laborers. It's. This is the spreadsheet or this document is from last year, which is updated and I carried over the eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if you wanted to go up every dollar per hour. For the whole year is two thousand, so to go from eighteen to twenty is only four thousand increase. You know, once you have the big numbers down.
You've been making for three hours.
What, what do you?
There's more to talk about for sure, but I just wanna.
Michelle, what, what, what would you feel how almost done?
I just wanna move past that part.
Um.
Getting a little bit stuck.
Uh, so in addition to the labor, though, he did, just like, there was a capital, I guess it was capital. Um. An improvement in the sewer plant, what he thought was important to maintain the life of the plant. Right?
It's one of the pumps. There's two pumps that basically operate the plant. Um, and they are thirty years old. Um.
And we're gonna see that in the, the wastewater, the water and wastewater.
It has to be engineered first. Um, so that's why I said I didn't include any capital projects on here because, you know. That maybe the engineering needs to be included is what I'm saying.
It sounded in, the way he explained it, it sounded important for keeping an old plant going. Kind of like an old course that will keep going, but you have to. Do this upgrade, do this maintenance piece, so it sounded important to me.
Overall, staffing and wages usually, um, for illustrative purposes. We come up with a percentage to include possibly in the budget across everyone, across all departments. Um, that's something the board wants to do, performance reviews are going on. I don't know if they're completed.
No, they're not. I still have to meet with the department. Bugsy's just scheduling. Matt has had people out, so he's behind completing them.
Is the board of the opinion that there should be? Village-wide raises like for inflation, that it should be. By person based on the performance reviews, leave it at flat and see where we land if we have to add. What kind of illustrator for?
I think. The, start with, start with, um. The cost of living increase. Two percent to meet inflation.
Two point four.
Right now.
Right, it was, it was two percent. Four did two percent last year.
And it did two percent last year.
Yeah.
And see where we are and by then we should have more feedback from performance appraisals. And we can make decisions from there.
Whatever the inflation is right, right, right now.
And there's an inflation like kind of relative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two is where we traditionally been.
Yeah.
Chips, we talked about briefly, it's a net zero for the budget. There is three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars eligible to be spent. The state holds the money, you have to draw down on it. Commit for reimbursements. Um, but it has been a long time, so. You know, in the past, we've always just included all the chips revenue and all the chips expenses, but I don't really know if that's the right way to do it because we just. Haven't been using it. So unless we're really going to use it in twenty-four, twenty-five, I.
I think that we have, that the board has relied on. Bugsy's team. To bring forward these projects and. Um. Develop the RFPs, et cetera. Um, two thousand seventeen, we did work with an outside, the village did work with an outside engineer, like P and B was at P and P or something on Garden Street. Um, it's just not something that he has in, in the scope of work with three people. He doesn't do, I think we need to work with Han on. Identifying chips projects and getting them done.
I would agree. I think their regular maintenance work is about. Up to here and that's about all they get the capacity.
But we have, and we have roadways that need to be fixed and there's money available to do it.
Do you think a chip project, given everything else that's going on, is feasible in the next fifteen months?
What, I, I think we need feedback from Han on what? How much time, I mean, they're already putting in a ton of time on our storm damage projects. Um. Part of it is a question to them. What do you feel like you can? Can take on? Do, are we, were, you know, are we maxing you out? For the village. Michelle, do we lose this at some, any point? Do we lose this money? Do we lose chips or is it continue to be banked for us?
It's rolled over every year, but you have to assume at some point.
I'm nervous.
I don't know if you do. The state encourages you to roll over as little as you can.
Yeah.
Um, there are other places that do this. They bank it until it's a good project. There are other places where if you check. It is zero every year. They never have a balance. They spend it all. So there's both ways of doing it. I don't know what's right or wrong.
Well, I'm sure that some of that is rely, is. Well, I'm sure that some of that is rely, is dependent upon how many and what their departments look like to actually get the work done.
Does it have to be, if we have Han, let's say Han says they, they can do the RFP and the sort of the new energy process, the point where it's ready for construction. We're not talking about having our guys doing it.
No, no, no.
We would be.
Sitting it out.
Mm-hmm, the whole thing.
Yeah, our guys can't do more than like the size of this table.
Right.
So, um, why don't we wait to hear what their capacity is, because I think, you know, we've been talking about chips money for a couple of years now, and I think there's, there's projects that we could all just go outside right now and identify.
We all point to a road that needs to be repaired.
So.
Chips money for culverts.
I don't know that chips is paving money, isn't it?
So chips is paving money, but if you hit certain conditions, it's a full go paving, so it could be sidewalk, under the road, things like that.
I knew sidewalks, I didn't know culvert.
Right.
Could it?
I mean, it makes sense now that you say it.
Hmm.
Which is another reason we should be giving, giving it to Honda Scope and get it out so it gets done right, like.
Bear Street?
No, no, because the, if you. We're, we're, so we ha, we have a source, I mean, I guess in theory, anything in that case could be, if it's culverts, anything could be.
You have to start chips. Well, there's three hundred eighty-nine thousand chips. You have to start really reading fine print. There are certain funding sources that can be combined and some that cannot.
Right, well, we're getting funds, like eighty percent for Bear Street, we might not want to spend our chips money there, right?
I think chips is a standalone project. There are some sources where you can use for that twenty percent match. Um, every grant or funding source says what you can and cannot combine, and sometimes you can't combine federal and state. Um, but chips, think about chips would be more for all the streets that aren't Main Street or Bear Street.
Yeah.
Because those two have other potential funding sources, whereas like a garden or church is tips or it's nothing.
Yeah. Um. Um. And all of those, all of those intricacies are something that, that's an expertise I'm swayed with. Yeah, keep going.
Um, village-wide, um, yes, comes back to the capital. On the capital project, I think we should add roof repairs. Um, wastewater, village hall, and highlight.
Yeah.
Um, we've all talked about those. Village hall improvements are moving forward, um, with design. However, that DASME grant is only two hundred fifty thousand. I think we have to have a conversation about how much the general fund would have to possibly pay.
Well, we're gonna have a better sense of that soon, so the conditions assessment has been done. The architect has been laying out different floor plans, which when we're ready, we can bring forward for everybody to look at staff and insulted with, with staff about needs, et cetera. Um, the engineering, electrical, and plumbing survey has been done. We're waiting for results from it. We had a nice sort of, nice sort of consult. The next step is to take what's been designed and estimate. The challenge, the challenge is so that we can, DASME needs, DASME's giving us two hundred fifty thousand dollars, right? So right now we, we've committed about, uh, the dormitory authority. It's a grant that came through Sandy Galiff. Um, we've got two hundred fifty thousand dollars available to us. Right now we account for about seventy-seven thousand in expenses so far, and we needed the conditions assessment to figure out what we would need from there.
Mm-hmm.
So until we get that back, I don't know what the answer is on what the balance will be, but it's certainly not two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of work. Um, but we'll know more, that will know more in the next soon. I don't know exactly when, but it's, it's going forward.
Um, community culverts, road engineer, we'll talk about in capital, um, doors and security um, at village-owned facilities, uh, on the DASME grant, the village purchased items for this building.
Yep.
Um, I got the quote today, software maintenance, um, for all buildings that are proposed is fourteen thousand a year. So that's something that's going to have to be built in. DASME also doesn't pay the one-time cost for software at all, so they only pay for the equipment and labor. Um, so the village, as in, as it implements the A plus recommendations, or doesn't, if it does, there are year-over-year associated maintenance and licensing, um, costs to factor in.
So, so A plus and the architect are working together so that when we do this work, we're not doing work twice, in terms of considering the doors that go in, et cetera. They are, they are talking. Um, only to say that's not, they're not being done, they're not being done in isolation.
I'm just.
Yeah, annual cost.
Yeah, but just like, okay, with the doors and stuff?
No.
And, yeah, the, the door slates and things like that.
Technology has been acquired, now it's matching the doors to the technology. And, and that is also.
Technology has been acquired, but there's those annual costs. Technology.
Software, licensing, maintenance agreements.
That we did in a, we did a bid with, um, A plus is the company that did held in stores.
A plus is on state plan.
Yeah, I'll take.
Talk about Dan Waterfathers and, um, and one of the, the last agents of the outstanding debt that the village has right now, which is focused in the water and wastewater fund. The water fund, um, doesn't have a bond payment right now. It used to. The sewer fund, a bond payment will be over, um, in twenty twenty-five. Um, so twenty twenty-five would be a great year to have another bond in the sewer fund so that you don't lose that, that payment, you just keep it going. Um.
And is that project that Laura just referenced, the pump? She was talking about, is that?
I don't think that would be bonded, I don't think it's enough. But there's, um, borrowing, um, from EFC, like we did a four hundred forty-three thousand dollar project out of the last sewer wall.
That was the relining?
The relining, the emergency generator and the pump station. Um.
The emergency generator, that project never got finished. That third, that, the last wall didn't get enclosed.
That's not what, no, the emergency generator is a generator that can be towed to the different.
Oh, 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 the portable one?
Yeah.
Terms of building work, that's another piece of facilities work that's outstanding, closing one of the building.
Any additional comments?
Thank you.
The board, the board's budget now.
Yes, so for next week, you're, you're coming, you're making modifications based on feedback around tax levy?
You'll have a general fund budget to look at.
I'll be remote next week. Like, if I join, that's pretty much trouble. Things important.
Well, absolutely, and if not, thank you.
Yeah, oh, definitely, always, always for sure.
This is the longest budget discussion we have.
Next week. And it won't be able to make.
My plan for next week with monthly reports is to identify them as being in the public record on the website, but not go through them, so that we have time reserved for this.
And give everybody a heads up, the meeting on the twentieth will, won't start until seven thirty.
Right, Michelle.
Uh, so we'll do board business first, and then Michelle will be able to try and sit at a clock.
Why don't we do the monthly meeting portion at seven as we regularly do?
Because the monthly meeting is the second.
Oh, the twentieth, twentieth, sorry, sorry.
Can't hear that.
Nope.
We have some more business tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Seriously, that's not, that's not the sarcastic way at all. No, you're not at all. Um, thank you. I appreciate it. Stay calm, Michelle. Um. The next item is a, um, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Putnam County Real Property for preparation of the twenty twenty-four tax roll. We do this every year. Um, it's done by resolution. Any questions? Someone like to make the motion, make the resolution, make a resolution forward?
Sure. Um, I I can read, okay. Um, resolution zero six dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to sign contract with Putnam County Real Property for the preparation of twenty twenty-four village tax rolls that builds. The following resolution was offered by myself for adoption, and second by trustee Starbuck to it, whereas the Putnam County Real Property Tax Service has tendered proposed contract to the village, providing for certain services related to the preparation of the village's twenty twenty-four tax rolls and bills. And whereas the village board finds that it is, it's in its best interest of the village to enter the set contract. Now, therefore, it be resolved that, one, the village board does approve the proposed contract, a copy of which is attached here too. And two, the mayor is authorized to execute said agreement and any documents necessary for its implementation on a low call.
Mayor Foley, trustee Bozey, trustee Freymar, trustee Starbuck, trustee Woods. Officially adopted by a vote of five zero.
Okay, next is over to Laura for the next resolution.
Great. Uh, I'll, I'll just regrow a vote. All right, resolution zero seven twenty twenty-four. We're getting a bid for electric vehicle charger installation. The following resolution was offered by Laura Bozey for adoption and executive by.
Take a second.
Mayor. To it. Whereas the village of Cool Spring earned a grant from the nicer different energy communities program to cover the full house and sell more electric vehicle charger ports, and whereas bids were requested to install more EV chargers for that Main Street. First three bids were received from Energy Five, Livingston Energy, and Flagstaff Stations Online, whereas Laura Bozey, those trustees, as our coordinator, reviewed the bids and made a recommendation to the board and trustees to accept the bid of Livingston Energy based on overall quality and cost efficiency. Now, it is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for installation of four EV chargers on Main Street at a cost of sixteen thousand nine hundred ten dollars living from energy.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Trustee Bozey.
Hi.
Trustee Freymar.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Woods.
Hi.
Officially adopted by a vote of five zero.
Yes, so, so then they pay both. That's right. It doesn't change the leaders.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and next to our, um, old favorite community events requesting approval, uh, the Knights of Columbus would like to hold their annual Easter egg hunt at McConville Park on the twenty-third of March.
I have a question about this one.
Seriously?
What is eastern music? It says the music's gonna be eastern music playing.
Can tell you, but it's always fun.
I do.
Cotton tail bumpkins. Three come speed.
Yeah, there you go. That's might be one of them, okay. Um, any discussion other than the question of music? Any concerns? Okay, I would make a motion to permit the Knights of Columbus to hold their annual Easter egg hunt with music on three twenty-three, twenty-four, with a rain or snow date of three thirty from nine AM to ten, to one PM.
At the second at this point.
Yes, you do. All in favor? I, these, by the way, these just have been, they have been reviewed by the, the events coordinator already, and insurance, et cetera, is in place. The second, um, this is, I think, the third year that Foundry Montessori School will do an International Day, um, performance at the bandstand. Um, they are requesting April twenty-sixth from ten fifteen to ten thirty AM. It's pretty quick. The kids walk down Main Street, cops make sure they get there safely, they sing a few songs, and it's over. Any discussion? Um, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Foundry Montessori School for use of the bandstand, um, on
April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth from ten fifteen to ten thirty.
Favor?
Hi.
Hi. Minutes, uh, the thirteenth, neither Tweets nor Eliza are able to vote on these. Um.
Neither sound either, yeah, for me.
Okay, so well, let's take in the thirteenth first. Laura, did you?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for twelve thirteen twenty-three.
Um, favor?
Hi.
And who have done?
Not me, sorry.
Me? It's just habit, I, okay.
It's good to me.
February seventh, uh, everyone that tweets can vote on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Who's got the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills, batch seven two seven four, in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you for the time reviewing the bills.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. What can we do? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Well. The first one's, the first one's painful, and then things become more clear.
So what happens next week? Cause I'm in Orlando and I'm.
Running.